For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to ask for the report of action taken in closed session. Trustee Brown.
Mr. President, at tonight's closed session, the board voted to ratify the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which are subject to the contractual agreement by the chancellor. Recommendation to appoint Nathan Pellegrin as Director of Institutional Research District Office from May 14th, 2014 to June 30th, 2016, at a salary of $118,450 annually. That was unanimous, yes, all A's. Recommendation to appoint Lila Chavez as Interim Director of Student Activities, Mary College, from May 27th, 2014 through November 3rd, 2014, or until the position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first, at $97,850 annually, all A's, seven yes. Recommendation to extend the appointment of Natasha Spivey as Interim Director of Human Resources District Office, effective May 13th, 2014 through June 30th, 2014, or until the position is filled on a regular basis, at $113,300 annually, seven I's. Recommendation to extend the appointment of El Nora Webb as College President, Laney College, effective June 30th, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, at $175,000 annually. Recommendation to appoint Tony Cook as Dean of Special -- that's unanimous, yes. Recommendation to appoint Tony Cook as Dean of Special Programs and Grants, College of Alameda, effective May 14th, 2014 through June 30th, 2016, at $123,600 annually, all yes, seven yes. Recommendation to appoint Timothy Karas as Vice President of Instruction, College of Alameda, effective May 14th, 2014 through June 30th, 2016, at $133,900 annually, all yes, seven yes. Recommendation to appoint Tram Voe Kumamoto as Vice President of Instruction, Berkeley City College, effective May 14th, 2014 through June 30th, 2016, at $139,050 annually, seven yes.
[laughter]
Ratification of the chancellor's approval to appoint Ahmad Mansour as Interim Dean of Workforce Development Applied Sciences, Mary College, effective April 28th, 2014, through September 30th, 2014, or until the position is filled on a regular basis, at $113,300 annually, seven yes. Employee appeal, motion to uphold the district's administrative determination regarding an employee appeal to a complaint, motion passes. Ratification of Partners in Leadership Settlement Agreement, motion passes. Now, if the individuals that have been, have received their contract approvals and awards and continuations are here, could you please stand up so that we can give you a round of applause?[203.87][203.87][applause] Thank you, and welcome to your new position, or welcome and thank you for the job you've been doing. And, Mr. President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to move, modify tonight's agenda, and we're going to pull item number 14 from tonight's agenda, which is Consider Approval of Contract Addendum for Stephanie Green in the amount of $3,000. That's being pulled from the agenda. Item number 12, Consider Approval of Sabbatical Leaves for 2014-2015, is being moved to the action calendar. It's been moved by trustee, by trustee Withrow. And we're also amending tonight's agenda without objection. Items number 15, 16, and 17 is Consider Approval of Contract for Bond Council Services with Oric, Harrington, and Setcliffe. Number 16, Consider Approval of Contracts for Disclosure Council Services with Norton, Rose, Fulbright, Nixon, Peabody, and Oric. And number 17, Consider Approval of Contracts for Underwriting Services with Barclays, Piper, Jaffray, Raymond James, and Seabird and Steeple. All those items, number 15, 16, and 17 are approved as is, with the modification that we're not making any references to the other post-employment employee benefits. So it excludes any reference to providing services relating to the OPEB bond, and it's just relating to our outstanding general obligation bonds that the district has in place. Any other amendments to tonight's agenda? Any other modifications? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Riley, seconded by trustee Withrow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion passes. At this point in time, we'd like to move the board's attention to consider approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting of April 8th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Moved by trustee Galosse, seconded by trustee Riley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. At this point in time, we're going to move on to public communication. We have about 45 speaker cards. We'd like to ask the speakers from the public to, if you have similar comments, to kind of try to consolidate your comments as best as possible, but we will accommodate every speaker tonight. Trustee Brown.
We have a number of speaker cards, and I will ask you to line up in order, if you could recall the order that we're calling out here. We have Chris Widenbach, Peter Brown, Kim Castanasi, Fred Borgen, Marisol Zavala Suarez, Yvette Fela Kara, Gabby Flores, Oscar Sorto. Then we have Justin Chong, Pamela Tapia, Chica Okoye, Mina Ramirez, Tania Kapner, Malisha Henderson. Mr. Widenbach, if you'd like to get started. I'll call the remainder of the names so people could line up after this group gets through.
Thank you. I'm Chris Widenbach, from Laney College's English Department Faculty. I'd like to ask the trustees, the chancellor, and anyone involved in Laney College's shared governance structures to consider reprioritizing the development project at the student center. I was very surprised recently to learn that something that was considered of an extremely high priority, very recently, has dropped off of the prioritization list, it seems, completely, and I'm very troubled by that. I'm also here, and I'm mainly here tonight, to join the serious ethical call to replace Janet Napolitano as the commencement speaker at Laney College's graduation.[509.12][509.12][applause] I and others are convinced that the decision to invite her was made with insufficient student input. It troubles me to know of the strenuous effort by the ASLC especially to facilitate discussion of this matter, and to fulfill their responsibilities of listening to other students and participating in the shared governance process, only to be thus far deprived of the response they deserve. I'm going to leave my remarks at that, because other people are going to echo similar concerns tonight. This is a very serious issue, and I guess I just, I would like to remind everyone that an attempt has been made to address this issue through proper channels, through the shared governance system, quietly, respectfully, with great dignity, serious ethical purpose, but every bit of collegiality that we should expect from one another. We have not gotten the response that that activity deserves. And so, with time so short now, things are changing, and the nature of discourse is going to change to suit that timetable, and I think that's really unfortunate. Thank you.[595.70][595.70][applause]
Good afternoon. My name is Marisol Zavala Suarez. I'm a student at Laney College. I was the student that was passing out the petition to support Chancellor Ortiz's decision to remove Doff to grip as the president of Laney College. One thing that I wanted to read out to you was the Board Policy 2200, Board Duties and Responsibilities, and along it, it says that the board should delegate power and authority to the chancellor to effectively lead the district. It also says that you guys hire the chancellor to evaluate his job with respect to the authority of the chancellor by providing policy, direction, and guidance only to the chancellor who's responsible for the management of the district and his employees. Also, the reason why I'm here is because I'm a student that has been directly affected by Janet Napolitano. I have family members that have been deported to Mexico. They were taxpayers, they were not being supported by the system, they were not being supported by welfare or any medical assistance, however, they owned their business, and they were paying their taxes like everyone else. Now, my cousins live with us here in Baypoint. They're seven, eight, and nine years old, and they cannot see their parents because their parents have been deported to Mexico. However, as I came in this afternoon and I went into the restroom, I overheard trustee Linda Handy stating that we're here wasting you guys' time, because -- may I finish?
Let her finish.
May I finish?
It's her time.
I'm sorry.
Oh, my God, that's like starting democratic, that you interrupt the speaker.
If you're going to quote me, quote me correctly.
She can quote you however she wants.
Let's, let's have order, please, and please refrain from making direct accusations at anybody. Please proceed.
All right. So just the statement was that we're here wasting you guys' time, because that's not a decision that you guys can make, and you guys have no influence on it. One thing that I want to remind you is that without students, we don't have a college, we don't have a district, we don't have a board for a seat.[742.12][742.12][applause] When is going to be enough? When are you going to take care of your students? You guys want to increase the amount of students that register to the school. However, it takes a year to retake Physics 4A if you need to. It takes a year to register to some of the engineering classes, but you want engineers and science majors to transfer to the UC system and the CSU system, but there's no class availability. You haven't hired any full-time faculty that can support us. We are getting breadcrumbs from, pretty much from everyone. And when is it going to be enough? Without students, again, you don't have a school, you don't have a district, we won't have a board of trustees to support us. Also, I wanted to read something from you.
Ms. Suarez, your three minutes is, would someone like to see their time? Would someone like to see their time to Ms. Suarez?
It's okay, it's okay. She got interrupted, that's true, and my, I'm the next speaker, Fred Burgoyne, and I'm allocating my time to Marisol here.
Fred, I'm sorry, your name again was?
Fred Burgoyne. I'm in there.
Go ahead, Ms. Suarez, I'm going to just look for the card while you're talking.
Okay. So I wanted to read something to you, the statement of values of Laney College, and it talks about respect. "We demonstrate a commitment to the value of each individual through trust, cooperation, and teamwork," and I haven't seen that at Laney. It's been very challenging to continue to be a student at Laney College, primarily a night student. We pay all of our fees, however, we don't have financial aid at night that can cater to us. We don't even have a cafeteria that will give us food after 6:00 in the afternoon. Our classes start at 6:30, so if you just got out of work and you have to bar your way over to school and start class at 6:30, good luck to you, because there's not even coffee for you to drink. Just to point out a few things. Now, if you need help with your financial aid, there's nothing available. If you need help with admissions and records, there's nothing available. Every once in a while, they might open admissions and records, but primarily, there's nothing available for the students. God forbid that we have a counselor that will help us out. We do not have any counseling that can help us, all of us that are night students, that are coming to school, that are paying our fees, that are taking our classes, and we're doing everything we can to finish up our programs, but we're not being supported by a school. Another thing that I wanted to read to you also has to do with diversity. Seems to me that, for some reason, the politics and the bureaucracy throughout the district is always blamed or placed on race, and color, and ethnicity. Aren't we a diverse campus? That's what makes Oakland a beautiful city, the fact that we're very diverse, that we have any, every ethnicity and every race that can participate, that we can learn from each other. So, on our statement, it says that we are a multicultural and diverse organization, an enriching blend of people and ideas. This college is a place for all people and environment devoted to fostering and embracing the diversity of our staff, faculty, and student body. There's no accountability in this college. We are, according to the statement, "We are individually and collectively responsible for achieving the highest level of performance in fulfilling our mission." However, if you want to take Physics 4A with Dr. Nichols, you have to wait a year. If you need to take Calculus 3, you have to wait a year. There is no sections available. 183 sections were cut out of our curriculum about a year and a half ago, and there has not been anything done to help the students get out of Laney College and move on to the next level, which is a four-year institution. We have no support for our math lab. We need our math instructors to feel supported. How do you want people to pass their classes if they don't have support for their foundation? If they don't have support for their chemistry classes, for their biology classes, for their physics classes, and all of them require math? And if we don't have enough students to support our students, then what are we going to do? How are we going to get them to transfer?
Suarez, that's another three minutes. Is someone else willing to see their time?
Dabi, thank you very much.[1005.11][1005.11][applause]
The next speaker is Peter Brown.
Good evening. I'm Peter Brown. I teach at Laney College, and I teach a subject called Manufacturing Technology. I want you to remember that, because I'm going to come back to it. So, in addition to what the sister just before me mentioned, every semester now, I have students who are homeless, or become homeless during the semester and have to drop. I am not alone. Almost every teacher I talk with says, "Oh, yeah, that's happening to me, too." The last student I lost had a master's in engineering, okay? Homeless and broke. So, there's something going on. The one bathroom that we have available for our department and three other departments, only half of it works at any one time, and it takes six months to get that fixed, and some of the time, almost none of it works. There are no paper towels, some of the time, there's no toilet paper, okay? It's not the only bathroom on campus that's that way, because the custodians are overloaded and understaffed, the maintenance engineers are overloaded and understaffed, both by over 50%, okay? And so, there's a process going on that I recognize as crisis, but I don't believe is acknowledged as crisis. In some ways, we almost do not exist as a campus, when things are not safe, when it takes a threat by the Peralta Federation of Teachers to bring in OSHA to get water leaks fixed over every one of the CTE labs on campus, labs where we use high-voltage electricity and run heavy equipment, where water is raining down, okay? There's something very seriously wrong, that we had to threaten to bring in OSHA to get that moving. It's moving. I respect the people that have moved on it, but it shouldn't have taken that, it's taken eight years, okay? So, what is this that's going on? And what would real leadership be? Because what I'm talking about is leadership, and I have no specific accusation to make, but every manufacturer in this country is filling their manufacturing plant with robots. Our students are going out into temporary jobs and low-wage jobs, that's what there is for over a third of the workforce. That is the world now. If we don't face that, then we're, we're absconding on our responsibility, and our leadership is responding, is absconding on their responsibility. You're in a very difficult place, you have no union to represent you. I understand that, but there is less and less middle ground between serving the needs of the community and serving the needs of the corporations who are openly saying that they are taking over education and turning it to private uses. You know this, if you read anything, you know this. And it is because the entire technology has changed, this is a change on the order of the development of the steam engine that completely destroyed the nobility, okay? It destroyed the landed nobility, changed the whole dynamic. This is what we're looking at. So what I have to say to you is that in this time, real leadership consists --
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, we're at the end of our three minutes.
I'm in my last sentence. Real leadership will consist of making that choice, there is little, less and less middle ground for you to stand on. You will not be rewarded for standing with the community except by the community. The people who are paying you now will not reward you for that, but they will use you as patsies to do their bidding.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, would you like to take someone else's three minutes?[1224.71][1224.71][applause] Yvette Fela Kara? Ms. Fela Kara? Yvette?
So, everyone who's here with BAM should come on up, we're speaking against Janet Napolitano speaking at the commencement ceremony. My name's Yvette Falarca, I'm a national organizer with the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, and Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary, BAM. And we're here united to speak out against Janet Napolitano as the commencement keynote speaker at Laney's graduation. It is an absolute insult, it is arrogant, to invite somebody like Janet Napolitano, and the record, and the racism that she represents, to come to Laney Community College, here in Oakland, in the heart of Oakland, to be there for the students' celebration, for what they have accomplished, for what they and their families have accomplished. We're here to make clear that that is not going to happen, that cannot happen, and that if this board doesn't correct that, somebody will, this community will. Since the days of the founding of this nation, race and racism has been the defining question for the meaning of citizenship, and what citizenship rights actually mean. And today, there are 12 million undocumented immigrants who live here in this country, who work here, who go to school here, who contribute to this nation, and right here in Oakland, who are denied full citizenship rights, but who by any rational definition are citizens, are Americans. But 2 million of our own Americans, our fellow Americans who don't have papers, have been victimized, have been deported, have been divided from their families, thanks to Janet Napolitano, the now-current UC president. But that, if that isn't bad enough, now she's going to be coming to Oakland to speak at this graduation? Hell, no. Janet Napolitano does not represent Oakland, she doesn't represent Laney College, and she certainly doesn't represent the UC system. So whatever planning went into this, thinking that this would somehow be a way to promote Laney Community Colleges, or to bring in investors, is actually going to backfire, because Napolitano is not only uniformly not respected, she is passionately hated and passionately opposed by students and by community members of every race. And so, we're here to make clear that we will not accept someone who is a threat to every undocumented immigrant student, every Latina or Latino immigrant or community member, but as members of this community of all races who speak out against racism and for equality, we're going to fight Napolitano's speak, speech, and her speaking at the commencement by any means necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Fela Kara.[1424.47][1424.47][applause] The next speaker is Gabby Flores. Ms. Flores? The next speaker is Gabby Flores.
Hello, my name is Gabriela Flores, and I'm a student at College of Alameda. I'm also secretary at AACOA. I know I spoke to you, all of you, a couple of weeks ago about the same issue, about why Janet Napolitano was even considered as being a keynote speaker for the Laney graduation. I just personally, I think, what went through the person's mind who invited her, I always wanted to ask this, Dr. Webb, what came through your mind when you invited her? Is that the thing?
Please direct your comments to the board trustees.
Is that, is that the appreciation you give to the students? That, I know a lot of people that sacrifice and went through hell, and went, you know, worked 24 hours a day, after that, wake up, go to school, and that's how you repay them? By inviting someone like her? Have you, like, no sense of compassion? And it's sad that it's gone to this point, and to think that I, for one second, thought that maybe this district was for the students and supported me and was by my side, but unfortunately, it's not. You know, we're here, we spend, I mean, I left my class to come here and speak. I don't get paid for this, all of you get paid for this, I don't. So for you to just disrespect me and disrespect everyone in the community, and disrespect College, Laney College, to invite her to speak, it's just very, it's very sad, and it's disappointing that I have people like this in my district that don't really care much for the students, unless they're getting a fat paycheck, that's all that matters to them. So, my only thing to say here is that I'm just very disappointed as a student that I come to a school where my opinion doesn't matter, my friends and my family's opinions don't matter, and that we're not respected, and I, that's not what we're about, but unfortunately, some people want to view it that way, and that's all I have to say.[1560.01][1560.01][applause]
Mr. Oscar Sorto?
Actually, my name is Kim Cantechesi. I believe I was passed over, I should have been the third speaker.
I'm calling them in the order that, where they line up. So if you'd like to speak now, I'll just take your, pull your card.
You actually called my name third, so somehow, we kind of got out of order. Like I said, my name is Kim Cantechesi. I am a field representative for SEIU Local 1021, representing the classified employees here at Peralta Community Colleges. And, thank you. And I'm not going to take much of your time, you've already heard a lot of what has been said about inviting Ms. Napolitano to this campus. On behalf of the executive board and the local, I would like to echo the comments that these students have made. I think it's an abomination that somebody with, with her record would be invited to a campus with as much cultural diversity and acceptance of others, and this person has probably deported more people than have even come to Laney College in a number of years. So I think it's, I think you should rescind the invitation, and you should do it now. And you should listen, and you should listen to the students who put the bread on your table, because without these people, there would be no Laney College for anybody to speak at. Thank you very much.[1658.04][1658.04][applause]
Justin Chong? Justin, Justin Chong?
Oscar Sorto.
Oh, okay, oh, sorry, sorry, Oscar, I called you before, Ms., Oscar Sorto.
Hello, everyone. I am a B54 student. I will be graduating from Laney College. I have worked the past two months to remove Janet Napolitano from our graduation. I have worked with the student government from Laney. Together, we have passed a resolution that Dr. Webb has ignored. She has ignored a town hall meeting where 95% of the people there were in one side, against having Napolitano in our graduation. She ignores that as well. We have go, go directly to her. She, she's definitely an authoritarian person. She has lied to me, she has lied to the people that is on my side directly in our faces. She told, my girlfriend called her two months ago, and she, she said that bringing Napolitano out of our graduation was not her decision, but the student government's decision. And that wasn't the case. She has lied to everyone. Yesterday, I sat down with her for like, over two hours, and all I heard were lies. I'm surprised that her contract was renewed, to be honest. I'm very surprised, because I don't think no one's taking into consideration the type of policy she is doing right now, how she's harming the Peralta District, how is she harming Laney College, how is harming the student body and the community. I'm here because I feel betrayed by everyone in this room, everyone that was supposed to represent me today. I feel that no one is on my side. I am undocumented, I have crossed the border twice. I'm not changeable, because in my country, there was a 12-year war, because we fought for dignity. If I had to fight out today, my history, I had not -- If I had to fight out today, my history, I had nothing else but dignity. If I had to, I had to fight and had to, I'm not going to be sitting at my graduation while someone that has been persecuting my community is speaking to me about my future. She has destroyed a lot of people's future, and if I had to be incarcerated and I had to be deported, just to make you guys understand that we care about our dignity and we care about our people, if I had to get deported, I don't mind to cross the border a third time, making sure that I had nothing but my dignity. And if no one, none of you have morals of dignity, you won't understand me. So if you do have some sense of moral and dignity, you should reconsider having Dr. Webb as a president of Laney College, and you should definitely do something to stop Janet Napolitano from coming to Laney College. You should definitely...
Would you like to take someone else's three minutes? Your three minutes is up. Mina Ramirez.
I will ask again that people refer from making personnel comments, direct all boards to the board of trustees. Thank you.
Mr. Sorto, you're...
I blame every one of you, not just Dr. Webb, but everyone, because if you are ignoring this problem, you are being part of the problem.
Yeah.
If you are not listening to a minority, because we are a minority, I understand that. I understand that probably we are a minority even in our graduation, but by her, by everyone ignoring a minority, you are telling us that immigrants and minority groups are not welcome in Laney College or the Peralta District. By saying, by saying that you rather have Janet Napolitano regardless of if you hurting someone's feelings, if you still want her there regardless of how people feel in your graduation, then you are telling me directly that you don't give a damn about no one.
That's right.
About your own interest and your own money. I quit my job two weeks ago, because, definitely because I wanted to stand up in every possible way that I can, I would definitely do whatever it takes to get that message, and like I say, I had nothing but my dignity. My country fought a 12-year war to fight for our dignity, and I'm here educating myself not to make money, but to continue to have my dignity and the respect for my people, for immigrants, for Latinos, for blacks, for every minority group that have been historically persecuted. I'm not here just for me. Today, I'm in this position, but I know historically blacks, Jews, and other people have been in my position as well, and they were minority too, and the last of minorities were inhumans. And just because the minority is supporting such an inhumane thing, that doesn't mean it should happen.
Right, that's right.
We need to stop it. Whatever you do, think about, because most of you have been, had to be voted to be here. You are supposed to be representing the people out there. Oakland is a diverse city. If you go to Fruitvale, to the Fruitvale area, you will understand what I'm saying. Because everyone in my community feels the same way I feel. We are not taking, we are not looking here to make ourselves rich, we are here to gain respect, because the US has exploited our countries, that's why we're here. So if you are not on my side, if you are not supporting me, bring Napolitano. Bring her and show everyone that Laney College and the Peralta District is not welcoming any student, minority student, and much less...
Mr. Sorto, your second three minutes is up. Would you like to take someone else's?
No, thank you, that's all.
The next, the next speaker is Justin Chong. Justin?
Hello, my name is Justin Chong. I'm also a national organizer with the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary, BAM. We're here today because we're outraged by the decision that, and under the leadership of this board, as well as Dr. Webb, to choose Napolitano as the keynote speaker of the Laney graduation ceremony. This woman used to be the head of Homeland Security, deported 2 million undocumented immigrants in this nation, and she created racist laws for the police to racially profile anybody in this nation, created so much racism in our nation, and now you want to invite her to come to our graduation ceremony? What an insult!
That's right.
We demand the immediate removal of Napolitano from our graduation ceremony. This fight, this fight is about the dignity and respect that we, black, Latino, Asian, and every minority, in particularly immigrants, I myself, and undocumented immigrants from China, that we deserve. But it's so much more than that. The UC Regents appointed Janet Napolitano to destroy public education. She, under her leadership, she has already been privatizing the UC system. And I know that this board today is going to talk about the comprehensive master plan. We do not want the master plan to be modified, we want to restore it. That has been the, because that has been the rights to public education. Napolitano, I know that she's meeting with the leadership of the community colleges and the CSUs, talking about not funding any public funding for the California master plan and to privatize it, to use public, to private funding. And on top of that, they're going to provide four-year degree programs for the community colleges. Hell, no, we come to community colleges because we want to transfer out of it and go to a CSU, go to a UC, and get a good degree, not a second-class, not, like, most of the people who go to community colleges are black, Latino immigrants and working-class students. If we don't transfer out of it, it's a second-class segregated education system. We do not want that. And Napolitano, she's trying to come here to establish her authority, to put forward that kind of attack on public education, we would not allow that to happen. This fight, we stand here today to fight for our respect and dignity, but we're here to fight for everybody's future, to fight for public education, equality for all. We're uniting together, you better give us what we want.
David Douglas, the next speaker is David Douglas, then Pamela Tapia, Chica Okoye, Tanya Kapner, and Malisha Henderson. Are those people at the mic?
Hello, my name is Chica Okoye. I'm a student at Laney College. I'm studying African-American Studies. And as a student of African-American history, I want to point out that it is, as a student of history, it's very easy, and it's also very important, to make the link between struggles, immigrants' struggles, black people's struggles throughout the history of this nation. We can make this link, right? If we haven't made it, we should start to think about it. Many of the speakers before have talked about second-class citizenship and how that is enforced through immigration laws, denying people rights who are here, working, studying, trying to better their situations, often as a result of policies of this country, of the very highest people in power, including Janet Napolitano, people from the presidential administrations. For me, as a student, I think this is really important, to stand with everyone who's protesting against the decision by Laney College, by the Peralta Colleges, to invite Janet Napolitano, and by the board, by the president, not to disinvite her after such a tremendous outcry from the students and from the community. As I would said, it's quite an insult. It's rather shocking, actually, to stand here and be a part of a process of actually needing to demand at this point that we have a voice, that we have power. As a student of previous struggles, it's clear that it takes action, and at certain times, we are called upon to demand our rights, to demand our voice, to demand change. And so we will do that, this is part of that process. It will continue if you all don't exert whatever influence that you may have to remove Napolitano as a first step, right? This is not the end, this is part of our demand as students, who, as has been said, we do make this university, we do make this system. We are important, we demand respect, we demand to be heard, and we will be heard. So thank you very much.
Okay, hold on, if you're, if you're up there, and I haven't called your name yet, hold on, let me see if I've got it. Let's see, I've got Gabby Padilla, if you're up there, I don't want you to have to sit down and then come back up. Gabby, is Gabby there? Gabby's waiting, waiting? Okay, Kyle McCoy, okay, Zalvin Hill, Ben Lynch, Mark Ergood, Ronald Cruz. Ronald's not up there. Ronald, okay. Reginald Lyles, Edward Chavez, Ray Lopez. Oh, did, oh, Mr. Chavez, are you there?
Yeah.
All right.
So is Reginald Lyles.
And so is Reginald Lyles, all right, okay. Ray Lopez? Okay, Ray's there. Okay, hold on, I've got another stack of cards. Mary Norris, no. Okay, I think, okay, so let's do, let me just read these names again. Okay, so Mr. Lyles, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Chavez, Mr. Ergood, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Hill, Kyle McCoy, Ms. Padilla.
And I'm Tanya Kapner, you called my name.
And David Douglas also.
You want to go?
No.
No, they're just going in different order. Okay. I'm Tanya Kapner, I'm also with the BAM Civil Rights Coalition, and I think the Laney students have said it in many ways far more eloquently than I can about why Napolitano has to be uninvited now. The student government has said it, professors have said it, the community has said it, and it's really an outrage if you don't do it. So we're here to tell the truth, and we're here to demand that you act on it. Condoleezza Rice can be uninvited, I think Napolitano can be uninvited. Not only has she been the mass deporter and privatizer that everyone has spoken to, we also know the history of Occupy Oakland right up the street, and as coordinator of the attacks on the Occupy movement and peaceful protesters around the country being beaten, I'm sure there were many Laney College students there, because I know many Laney College students have stood up for public education in the public education demonstrations downtown and have led the way to try to fight the cuts on the community colleges. I'm just going to say what everybody else has made clear, we're not going to take separate unequal, we're not going to take second-class treatment. People of all races are going to stand together for immigrant rights in this new civil rights movement, and we're going to fight against separate unequal education. And we don't buy Napolitano's plan to stop the transferring of students from community college into the UCs. I don't believe it when she goes to Oakland high schools and claims to welcome Oakland students, and then UC Berkeley rejects students with 5.0s, which you can't get in almost any Oakland high school, rejects them when 12 of the Ivy Leagues are fighting for them. No, Napolitano is not welcoming Oakland, and we don't welcome her, and Laney College has made more than clear it doesn't welcome her. You all need to take some action. If you ever want to be elected again, or hold your head up high again, or even sleep at night, you need to take some action. And if you don't want a big PR debacle at the graduation, when students are trying to celebrate with their families who don't want to be deported, you need to uninvite her. I'm sure you know about the hundreds and hundreds of petitions we've been gathering as well. I'm sure you've heard how unpopular she is on campus. This is not just Oakland, this is the whole state of California, we're not Arizona.
That's right.
We don't accept Napolitano, who was endorsed by Sheriff Joe Arpaio of Arizona, for her governorship there. We don't, and she's not welcome, and you know this, so we need you to act on it, we demand that you act on it today, and you find some way to make sure she's not at that graduation, because she does not represent any kind of future of progress for this state, or this nation, or the people of this world.
Reginald Lyles, Ray Lopez, and Mr. Chavez.
Hello, my name is Reginald Lyles, and I'm here representing Allen Temple Baptist Church, and we fully support El Noro Webb. I'm saying this in realizing that I'm in this milieu, which I totally respect, but I can bifurcate the two issues. This woman is an outstanding civil servant, and we thank you for your service, and we're glad that the contract got renewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyles. Mr. Ray Lopez. Mr. Ray Lopez.
Ray.
Ray, Ray? Edward Chavez? Are you Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, hello, everyone, my name's Edward Chavez, and I am vice president of the Associated Students of Laney College. And, yeah, I just wanted to shed, like, a little bit more light on the process we have gone through regarding this issue. So initially, after being approached by students at Laney and just hearing about how having Ms. Napolitano at the graduation would affect them and how it would make them feel, we decided as a group at one of our council meetings to host a town hall discussion where members of the public and students at campus could come and voice their opinions about the issue. And we did have that meeting, it was, it was very respectful, people, you know, clearly made their voices heard, and the overwhelming majority of people in attendance made it clear to us that they didn't want Ms. Napolitano at the graduation. And so with the input we received at the, at the public forum, the input that we received talking to individual students, and our own views on the matter, we did pass that resolution, which urged Dr. Webb to uninvite Ms. Napolitano. And we didn't, we didn't make that decision lightly, you know, we put a lot of, we did put a lot of thought into the resolution, and it simply, you know, it simply states that we urge Dr. Webb to uninvite Ms. Napolitano, and, you know, really, we didn't want it, we didn't want it to get to this point. This is, I think this shows our reasons for, one of our main reasons for wanting to remove Ms. Napolitano as speaker at the graduation ceremony, and that is because it's dividing us, it's dividing our campus, you know, there are faculty, there are students, there are, you know, community partners who are all, feel so passionately about this, and frankly, it's just not the right forum to host Ms. Napolitano. Now, I don't think, I don't think anyone on the ASLC has ever, has ever been opposed to, you know, hosting her possibly for a public forum, something that would facilitate discussion, but graduation has a very specific purpose, and that's to celebrate the achievements of us, I'm graduating this semester also, and our classmates, our friends, everything that we've done together, how we've all come to be so close together. And we, I think, generally, the people I know at Laney, like, we really do love the school, and that's why this graduation is so important to us. And it's just, it's just not the right forum for this kind of debate, and let's keep it celebratory.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. The next is Mark Ergood, Ben Lynch, Zalvin Hill. Mark Ergood, Ben Lynch, Zalvin Hill.
Hi, I believe my name was called before, but it was a change in the order.
What's your name?
Pamela Tapia. Good afternoon, my name is Pamela Tapia, and I'm a student at Laney College. As a Laney College student, I urge the removal of Janet Napolitano as keynote speaker for the spring graduation. Napolitano does not represent or reflect our values as people of color and Laney students. At a moment where the focus should be placed on the graduating class, Napolitano's presence threatens and excludes us from the time of celebration. In such a diverse campus, one of the qualities that Laney is proud of, and a large immigrant population, inviting a mass deporter to congratulate the students on their achievements is a poor and insulting decision. Laney says no.
Mark Ergood, Ben Lynch, Zalvin Hill.
Yes, Mark Ergood, I'm also with BAM, I'm also speaking against bringing Napolitano for the graduation speech. for the graduation speech. I'm a teacher in Oakland, in Oakland Middle School, and Laney is a community institution for Oakland, and absolutely, the community rejects Napolitano. Oakland is one of the most progressive, dynamic, anti-racist communities in the country. To have Laney College bring Napolitano to Oakland for graduation is an insult not only to the students of Laney, but really to the entire city, and we're not going to stand for it. We are not going to have someone whose record is of the top cop for deporting millions of people across the country, record numbers, more than any time in history, that's her policy. That is not representative of Oakland, or the young people who are graduating from Laney. The appointment of Napolitano as UC President by the Regents was a tragic mistake, she's not an educator, she was appointed for political reasons, and it's poisoned the political atmosphere of the UCs. Every time she goes to a UC campus, she's protested, we are going to remove her from being UC President, and if this Board of Trustees backs up the decision to bring her to commencement, it's going to poison the atmosphere for this board also. It would be just as bad a decision for this board to bring her and to back that up. This community will fight for equality ever since 2000, there is a new civil rights movement. We're seeing, you can see it here tonight, you can see it in 2006, with the mass demonstrations and marches across the country for rights for Latinos and immigrants. That was the largest demonstrations we've seen in this country. We had marches of tens of thousands in Oakland. That movement is going to continue to fight, and it's polarizing. There's a fight to suppress that, to take away public education, to take away the funding for public education, we were hearing earlier tonight about the conditions at Laney, due to the lack of funding and cutbacks and cuts in classes and facilities. We have to turn to the movement and fight for real public education, not cede to Napolitano who's really about privatizing, bringing in private money, and selling off the universities piece by piece in lieu of public funding. We are not putting up with Napolitano, we're defending public education, we're defending Oakland, and we call on this board to make the right decision and disinvite her. Thank you.
Ben Lynch, Zalvin Hill, Kyle McCoy.
Good evening, my name is Benjamin Lynch, I'm a research scientist at UC Berkeley, and I absolutely cannot stand that Janet Napolitano is head of my workplace, my university, and that you guys would invite her to speak at Laney graduation. Okay, the student movement at UC Berkeley got Chancellor Burgeno removed, because he attacked the student movement that was representing public education, the defense of public education, integration in higher education, the defense of transfer students, the right of students from Oakland to go to that campus, okay? Burgeno was uninvited from his commencement speech by Haverford College this week. Okay? We got him kicked out of UC Berkeley, his job's over, right? He can't even speak because of his actions against the student movement. I've marched with Laney College students in downtown Oakland for justice for Oscar Grant, I've marched with Laney College students in downtown Oakland in defense of public education, Laney College students shut down the 880 freeway, okay? That was in 2010. Young people are more prepared to fight now than they were two years ago. If you want to avoid the kind of disruption and PR debacle at Laney graduation, which I completely agree with everyone that's spoken before, is supposed to represent the achievements, the crowning, like, I mean, okay, my brother transferred to UC Berkeley from a community college. It is the vehicle for, the vast majority of people in California, and 50% of graduating seniors now are Latino, Latino, and Black. Janet Napolitano, her record is directly opposed to the ability of Laney students to go to UC Berkeley, to transfer into the UC system, to transfer into the CSU system. She is the opposite of everything these young people have worked for, she is the opposite of all of the hard work and dedication that these young people are striving for. I mean, okay, this is Oakland, she's not welcome in Oakland, she's not welcome in California, and you guys can uninvite her, it's the thing to do, it's easy, it's popular, people way more powerful than Janet Napolitano have been uninvited and will continue to be uninvited, okay? And this movement's going to fight.
Zalvin Hill, Kyle McCoy, Gabby Padilla.
Hi, I'm Zalvin Hill with the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, Immigrants, Rights, and to Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary. I'm pretty much going to echo what everybody behind me has said, it is an incompetent decision that you all decided to invite Napolitano, a mass deporter, human rights violator, someone with no background in academia, to come and speak at Laney's Community College, where there are majority-minority immigrants, documented and undocumented. It is disgusting that... This pisses me off, I'm sorry. It's just disgusting that you decide to invite her, and on top of it, you're ignoring what the majority of the students have already voiced to you, that she's not welcome here. It pisses me off that you don't listen, and if y'all continue and decide to invite her, we will be there in her face to let her know she is not welcome at the graduation or in the state of California, because we are not Arizona. If you invite her, that sends the message to me that you are all sellouts, and that you don't give a damn about our education. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Kyle McCoy and Gabby Padilla.
My name is Kyle McCoy, I am a resident of Oakland, California, all right? I transferred from a community college to a UC campus. When I got there to UC Berkeley, it was an amazing campus. But as it went on, they were trying to privatize our university, and we need to stop priv... And I stand up to stop privatizing our university. Now, I heard that Napolitano was invited to Laney College, the most diverse community college in Oakland. I was agitated. I worked with BRLP in Oakland, California, to help unify the community of Black and Brown This angers the community. If you have any minority struggle to see left, please uninvite her, because it will, if she is there at the graduation, there will be a mass demonstration.
Yeah. Gabby Padilla, Gabby?
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Gabriela Padilla, and I am a student at UC Berkeley, and I'm also here in support of Laney College students against Janet Napolitano's presence at their ceremony, because it is their decision in the end, it is, like everyone has already said, something that they want, and if the majority is in support of this decision, then those who are in charge of having invited her also have the power to disinvite her, as everyone has said. And there have already been quite a few demonstrations and protests against her presence in our campus at UC Berkeley, and we are in unity with these students, because we understand what they're going through, and we hope that you also take into consideration what the decision we want to be made for them is. So, thank you.
Ronald Cruz and Malisha Henderson. Mr. Cruz?
David Douglas.
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone, my name's David Douglas, I'm a national immigrant rights and civil rights organizer with the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary, BAM. I'm a senior at UC Berkeley, and also I have hundreds of signatures of Laney College students and Merritt College students to submit, signing on to the resolution demanding that Janet Napolitano be removed as keynote speaker at Laney College's graduation. We've gathered thousands of signatures within the UCs demanding the immediate removal of Janet Napolitano. The United States Supreme Court just took us back to Plessy v. Ferguson, they just upheld states' rights to vote and limit the political rights of minorities across the nation. We're fighting to reintegrate the universities of California and demand the integration and to defend the right of public education in the state of California. Janet Napolitano, with her appointment, is a cynical appointment, representing the further privatization and resegregation of the University of California, and the continued dismantlement of the original mission of the California Master Plan, to establish the right to public education for all and everyone over the age of 18 in the state of California. We are committed to uniting the student movement, the immigrant rights movement, the movement against racism and anti-immigrant bigotry, to defending the fundamental right to public education in the heart of Oakland, the diversity and the historic fight against racism. We're committed to rebuilding that militant struggle, the historical legacy of the Black Panther Party for Self-Defense coming out of the Laney College, Peralta College District in Oakland. This is a militant town, we're committed to defending the rights of immigrants, to stopping deportations, and to fight for full citizenship rights for all 11 million undocumented immigrants across the nation. You cannot continue to stand by the cynical decision to invite a mass deporter, an opportunist politician, to a day that's supposed to be a celebration of history, of struggle, the amount of adversity that undocumented students have overcame, have crossed the border multiple times, have had family members deported under Janet Napolitano's policy. It's an insult to this town that you would stand by the decision. We will hold you accountable, and Dr. Webb accountable, if you continue to stand by this decision. We're committed to shutting down the graduation ceremony through mass militant action if you continue with this decision. Reverse it now.
We'll have Merlin Edwards. Can the next speakers please take the mic? Merlin Edwards, Pastor Cheryl Ward, George Holland. Can we have a seat, please, and let the next speakers make their presentations? Can we have a seat, please, and let the next speakers make their presentation? We'll have Merlin Edwards, Pastor Cheryl Ward, I have two cards for Pastor Cheryl, I have Pastor Cheryl Ward and Reverend Cheryl Ward, and George Holland.
Madam Chair, and Mr. Chair, and the rest of the board, and the Chancellor, my name is Merlin Edwards, and tonight I'm representing not only the Oakland African-American Chamber of Commerce, but I'm representing a group called Brother to Brother. I'd like to first start off by saying that I'm disappointed with the process that we're taking right now, because it was my impression that the cards would be called in the order in which they were received, and I know that did not happen. And the reason why I know it did not happen, because Reggie Lyles was one of the last cards that I turned in, and he was able to speak, and I know my card was way up in front, and here we are, being called at almost 8:30 in the evening. So if that is your policy, to call in the order, then I think that's what you should do from here on out. But thank you for the opportunity of speaking with you this evening, and I'd like to point out that you may recall that my last speech that I made here, I indicated that we were not happy with what was going on with this board and with the Chancellor, and that all of you have to be re-elected at some point in time, and that we were going to watch you very carefully, and we have been watching you very carefully. Just about every day, we've been getting some information as to what you were doing and why you were doing it, and we have not been very happy with that. As a matter of fact, when the report was made tonight that Dr. Webb was being given a one-year extension to her contract, even though she did sign this form that I have in front of me, we're not happy with that either. We think that she should get a two-year contract and nothing less. And we said to you that time that we were not going away, and we're not going to go away. We're going to continue to fight, because I think it's an insult for you to give this woman a one-year contract with the way she has been running this campus, and even though our dear young brothers and sisters may have some opposition to some of the things that she's been doing, there are many, 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 many more people out there who love what she has been doing, and I'm here to let you know that these people do love what she's been doing, and we want her to be here for more than a year. So we would like to impress upon you that you reconsider and that you do give her a two-year contract, because not only are we going to be watching you in terms of what you're doing, we want to make sure that whether, whatever length of time that she's here, that you don't mess with her budget, to make sure that she's able to do the things that she needs to do, you don't mess with her staff, to make sure that she needs to do the things, that she has the tools to do the things that she needs to do, and we're going to watch you every day. We formed this coalition, and I can tell you, I've been in this city for well over 50 years, and it's the first time that I've seen this kind of coalition to come together, and we have agreed that we're going to stay together, and we're going to look at everything that you do, every one of you that's running for election, whether it's two years from now or four years from now, we're going to pay strictly close attention to you, and if you're not doing what the community wants you to do, you may not be in your office next time around. We are going to watch you. There's an old saying in the African-American church that God don't like evil, and God doesn't like evil, and we don't like evil either, and we think that it's an evil thing that you're doing with this Chancellor, and we're not going to sit by and just let it happen. So, we're watching you now, and we're going to continue watching you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Pastor Cheryl Ward.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I stand tonight on behalf of the East Bay Coalition of Change, the pastors, which includes the pastors of Oakland, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, I'm going to ask them to stand, as I call the members of these groups, pastors of Oakland, African-American Chamber of Commerce, National Action Network, the Oakland Chapter, the Native American Community, 100 Black Women, Brother to Brother, the Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, Black Women Organized for Political Action, the Oakland Black Caucus, the Black Elected Officials, Faith-Based Leaders, Chinatown Community, and we all are here in support of Dr. El Nora Webb tonight. And we concur with what Merlin Edwards said just a moment ago, and I read to you a story, a story, a letter that I wrote to the board. Dear President Gayen and Peralta Board of Trustees, there's a story in the Bible about a man named Jairus who desperately sought Jesus because his daughter was critically ill. By the time Jesus arrived at the little girl's bedside, it was too late, she had already succumbed to the illness. He performed a miracle by praying, laying his hands on her, and then raising her from the dead. It is apparent that Jairus came to Jesus because he believed him to possess the power and ability to do whatever it took to make the situation better. For hundreds of years and even today, scholars wrestle and vacillate back and forth as to whether or not this story is simply allegory or miraculously true. For the past two months, several representative organizations have come to you as an elected governing body stating that a daughter of this community was in trouble, not only in trouble, but the causative nature from the hands of one who answers to you. As elected representatives of the community, we believe you possess the power, capacity, and ability to repair the breach of trust broken between you and Dr. Webb, to protect her from the undue and unnecessary duress placed upon her by the might her from the undue and unnecessary duress placed upon her by the March fifteenth letter from Chancellor Jose Ortiz stating that her contract might not be renewed, as well as the breach of trust broken between you and each of us, who, by the way, happen to be your constituents. We've spoken to you in person, via letters, emails, during open forum and petitions with over two thousand signatures to no avail. In fact, the actions and non-actions of the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor in response to this atrocity speaks volumes and subsequently lets us know that you believe our positions to be irrelevant and inconsequential at best. In the National Basketball Association, when a player displays unsportsmanlike conduct involving excessive or violent contact that can injure the foul player, which may be unintentional or purposeful and is considered...
Excuse me, Reverend Ward, would you like, do you have someone else that'll see their three minutes?
I will.
Continue.
It is considered a serious personal foul and called a flagrant foul. There are two types of flagrant fouls. A flagrant one results in penalties, and a flagrant two results in the immediate ejection of the offender. Chancellor Ortiz's actions are equivalent to a flagrant one and flagrant two, and the Board of Trustees should have immediately penalized and ejected him. President Gayen, you and the board's actions, lack there and lack thereof, are equivalent to a team foul, which equates to a technical foul, an infraction of the rules involving any contact with the player during the course of the game. It simply means you are penalized for having done nothing to remedy the situation. If this is the leadership we can expect of you once you are elected to the Oakland City Council, we as a community now stand in solidarity in the ballot box with a vote of no confidence. To the rest of the Board of Trustees, we expect you to hear and heed the voice of those who elected you, or we simply will elect others who are willing to do so. You have taken a vote now of only one year. We expected you to take a vote of two years. We will be watching. We will be waiting to see what happens over this next year. We expect you to make her job very easy for her to do by equipping her with the tools that she needs and not sabotaging her work and her efforts. We also expect you to make an apology from the board and from the Chancellor for disrupting her life and the important work of leading and educating the students of Laney College.
Hello, my name is Mary Tremble Norris, and you called my name at the end of the last group, but I didn't, okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Mary Tremble Norris. I'm a member of the Oglala Lakota Nation of South Dakota. I'm also the Executive Director for American Indian Child Resource Center. And I'm here also to support Dr. Webb. And, you know, I just wanted to kind of echo what the pastor from Allen Temple said in that, you know, I appreciate the remarks of all the young people and their passion, but I also think that I can separate issues, you know, and not, you know, paint with broad strokes. Because I'm honored here to support Dr. Webb, and our agency and community stands arm-in-arm with the East Bay Coalition for Action in their work on this issue. Our agency, located in Oakland, provides many social and educational services to American Indian families, youth, and young adults in this area. And it was notable to me that in the list of the many communities that were not mentioned as, you know, underrepresented and, you know, subject to racism, et cetera, American Indians were not mentioned once. And that's kind of the reason that we support Dr. Webb. Dr. Webb works with our agency and as a community partner. She personally reached out to American Indian students that we serve and welcomed them to attend Laney and the Peralta Colleges. She offered to speak personally with students who struggled and offered advice and support to them. Our agency, in the past, in collaboration with the Associated Student Organization of Laney College, has put on a winter powwow for many years now, maybe as many as ten. And this community cultural and social event is open to all Laney students, and it showcases the American Indian students that do attend Laney, invites participation of the greater general population in the Bay Area and Oakland. It's well attended by many, many American Indian community members. And one of the themes that we talk about during that two-day event to the young people is the importance of higher education and how local institutions such as Laney are accessible to them and can assist them with career planning, enrollment, and financial aid. And this event itself offers the general population of Laney the opportunity to see that American culture still exists, American Indian people still exist, and a lot of them in the Bay Area, particularly Oakland. And this celebration is about American Indian culture, dancing and drumming.
Excuse me, Ms. Norris, would someone like to see their time, Ms. Norris?
Thank you. And young and old people, and they participate in centuries-old dancing and cultural practice, and those that are new. And this support of Laney and Dr. Webb doesn't go unnoticed by the American Indian community members, who often feel shut out and marginalized by major institutions, yeah, unrecognized, feeling like we're an invisible people. So, providing the venue that you do and a means to celebrate and share our culture is a simple but immeasurable way to be inclusive and demonstrate by actions and not words. We too join the coalition in asking the Peralta Board of Trustees to enter into a contract of at least two years that will provide stability. I don't believe Dr. Webb is responsible for the state budget cuts and all the havoc that ensued from them. And we just ask that she continue to have an equitable budget that gives her an opportunity to succeed at the many initiatives that she and other Laney staff have implemented. Our Oakland, the whole city of Oakland and the many communities, need leaders with positive vision and action. Thank you. And these are more petitions that were gathered. I'm not sure.
If you can give them to the clerk of the board, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Mr. Odell Johnson, Mr. George Holland, Dr. Carol Ward. Mr. Odell Johnson, Dr. Odell... I have a, Dr. Siri Brown has her own speaker card. Oh, well, come on up there. Thank you, ma'am. Can you tell me your names, please, so I can hold your cards?
Dr. Carol Ward Allen.
And there may be more cards. I see Dr. Siri Brown there, too.
What we're going to do is probably just say something in unison.
Oh, okay.
We'll keep it all in six minutes. Okay. Yeah, six minutes? Can we have six?
You have cards.
Okay. Okay. I'm Dr. Carol Ward Allen, and I am a adjunct, currently an adjunct professor at Laney College. However, I have been here since nineteen seventy. I've seen many chancellors come and go. I've seen many board directors come and go. I've seen many instructors. What I do see happening right now is that we are here concerned, and we sent you a letter. I hope you had an opportunity to read it. We're in support of Dr. Elnora Webb, and for one very important reason, we see a shrinkage in the number of African-Americans in all areas at the college, and we want our voice to be heard. Unfortunately, tonight, it was getting confused with another topic, and we want to make sure we bifurcate both of them to let you know that we are here in total support of Elnora Webb. And we would just like you to know that we have a voice very much involved in this, and we are concerned, because we get an opportunity to see it from a different angle than many of you do, from the, not only from the side of the teachers, but we get a chance to see her in action on the campus. And she's a stalwart individual who works very, very hard. I think this has been a trying period of time, because we, you know, when you have so much on you and so many different angles to deal with it from. The students, I totally personally agree with much that they have said. What disturbs me, and I have to say this, is most of the time these days, half of the people that come to you in honor of representing Peralta District or Laney College don't go to Laney. They aren't even members of the Oakland community. So, I just want to say that, because I think that we, in some kind of way, divide that up. And so, we just need to say that.
Excuse me, Ms. Ward, can we have, can we have silence, please, and everyone respect, everyone respect the First Amendment rights? Continue, Ms. Ward.
But what I do say, see here, which is disturbing me, over the more than forty years that I've been an instructor, I, we always worked as a coalition. Where I see as a failure is, is that maybe our leadership at the very top needs to sit down and talk to both sides and see if we can work out a positive coalition so we can have a win-win, so that we don't have to have groups' racial divide that we are having now. It's unnecessary and uncalled for. I love all of you, know each of you, have worked in your campaigns, will work in them again, I hope. But I certainly think we need to clarify this mess up and make sure that we hire more people, not only in the African-American Studies Department, but definitely not have a drop-off of African-Americans in leadership at this time. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Siri Brown, and I teach African-American Studies at Merritt College, and I'm the Chair of Social Sciences. And the wonderful thing about this evening is that it's a reflection of what we teach. We teach that we should be political, we should be involved, we should state our opinions. And so, I'm happy to be here to represent African-American Studies and to hear all the students speaking as well. We did send the board a letter of support, overwhelming support for Dr. Webb, and we are so glad that the board listened to the community. It means so much, because at the end of the day, this is the community's colleges, and the community has spoken in support of Dr. Webb, and the community is speaking here tonight also about this very critical issue of the speaker at Laney College. And so, my message is really just that we listen to the community and remember who it is we represent and what it is we represent. And we're happy to see that the board has supported extending Dr. Webb. However, we do not believe that a year is a good contract. We believe that it should be longer than a year, at least two years, so that she's given time. We also want people to know, the board to know, that if for some reason, next spring, it's decided to not continue Dr. Webb's, that we will all be back. Every single organization that came will be back, because we support this sister and we support the work that she does. Thank you.
Mr. Jeffrey Pete. Is Mr. George Holland here? I've called Mr. George Holland.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jeffrey Pete, and I live in a city in which there is an all-out assault on the African-American community. And while that assault can best be captured under the title of gentrification, gentrification has a myriad of moving parts in which the left of center politically and the right of center politically have merged in an effort to rid us from the residential, educational, and employment aspects of our community. Being born and raised in Berkeley, California, when I was growing up, black property ownership was thirty-four percent. It is now five percent. In Oakland, the numbers are becoming equally as drastic across the board. I am in the entertainment community, and Jack London Village, which housed the lion's share of African-American tenants, and Jack London Square faced the wrecking ball. The argument was there was going to be a five-star hotel. That was fifteen years ago. Nothing remains there but a parking lot. The tenants that were there, one of which was Sam of Sam's Art Gallery, who recently died, were given a small pittance and dispersed. Yoshiz was subsidized by the City of Oakland, the greatest art form this country has, jazz. It wasn't purchased by an African-American, and when they had their ten-year anniversary and had their ten-year anniversary CD, not one African-American was on that CD. The city gave a hundred million dollars to the Fox Oakland, and we don't even exist on that marquee. We didn't get any of that money, African-Americans. So, we're being designed out across the board, not the least of which is education, where it's important that we have visibility, particularly like someone like Dr. Webb. I support you absolutely and unequivocally. Thank you.
We have speaker cards for George Holland, Kitty Epstein, Carl Chan.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Webb, and other administrators. My name is Kitty Kelly Epstein. I'm an education professor. I host a radio program on education, and I've written several books about Oakland education. I probably watched it as carefully or more carefully than anybody else in the city. I was thrilled when Dr. Webb was appointed to be the president of Laney College, and I have remained thrilled. I could give you a dozen examples of who she is as a human being and also who she is as an educator. You don't have time to listen to all those examples, so I'll provide you just one. I was working temporarily. I took a leave from being a college professor in Oakland to work in the mayor's office for a couple of years, and we created a program, as programs often go, with a grant that they give you at the last minute, no time to plan anything, but you're not going to turn it down, because it's the only grant you're going to get, for doing something with what are inappropriately called gang-impacted kids. Maybe we could call them our kids, our kids that we should all be looking after and loving, but the only way you get a grant is if you call them gang-impacted. So, these were kids who were, had failed most of their classes at Fremont College, ninth and tenth graders, and because they'd failed, they weren't going to be promoted. And so, in collaboration with a couple nonprofits, Leadership Excellence, Libre, and a couple of other groups, we decided to do a program that had to be planned out at the last minute. We needed a miracle. We needed a place to hold it, some support services, somebody to work with, a college, and our miracle was Elnora Webb. Putting aside many other things I know she needed to do, she made it possible for these young people to be on this campus, in a classroom, safe, loved, looked after, services, all kinds of things, at the last minute. It was a beautiful program. It did amazing things. It intended to have some of those young people come on and go to Peralta in the end when they graduated. They did get to be promoted. They did, many of them graduate from high school, and some of them are actually going into teaching at this point. I know she has thousands of other stories to tell. I don't know them all. This is an exceptional educator. There should never have been any question that she should have a two-year contract or however long a contract as she needed to have. I'm glad you've come to some resolution. It doesn't seem like a sufficient resolution to me, but I'm glad you've achieved one. Thank you.
Mr. Carl Chan.
Good evening. I think Fook Trans' name is also here, just in case if I need more time, he might give me a few seconds. Good evening. My name is Carl Chan, and...
Good evening. My name is Fook Trans. I'm president of the Oakland Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. The reason I'm here tonight is to support Dr. Elnora Webb for president of Laney College, because she is a great leader. Thank you.
Well, since Fook doesn't speak much, though, so I'll speak the rest, okay? But first of all, I, you know, I'm pretty involved with Chinatown Chamber of Commerce and also serving on additional services, but I'm also a deputy head of, the chair of the Chinatown Neighborhood Crime Prevention Council. So, before I start saying anything, first I want to talk about the students today. I want to, they may be students today, but they're going to be the future... I want to, they may be students today, but they're going to be the future leaders tomorrow. So we've got to have a lot of respect for some of these kids. And also, we're so close, Chinatown is so close, only blocks away, from Laney College. So it's always a great relationship with the college here, College of Alameda, and our community. But I also, I know some folks talk about immigrants, you know, I just want to, I want to say this, even though I'm here to support El Nora, Dr. Webb, but the important thing is unless you are the native American Indian, we are all immigrants, or children or grandchildren of immigrants. So I think, you know, we have to understand the feeling about immigrants. Now, the reason why I'm here to talk, and simply, if you can recall, a few years ago, I'm one of those very lucky people who had the opportunity to interview many, many candidates who should be fitting into sitting into president of the Laney College. So I was one of the people, as a committee, to select, interview many, many qualified candidates. But of course, one of them, it was Dr. Webb. So at the end of the day, we just chosen the one who was qualified. And here today, the reason why I'm here to speak, and I'm sure you may still remember, there was incidents that, there were a couple of Chinese gentlemen, they were murdered in Oakland. And since then, there were chaos and also conflict between the African-American youth and the Asian youth. And I had been working with Dr. Webb and solving some of the issues together. So again, I want to say thank you to Dr. Webb for helping us to bridging the differences and bringing the youth together. And I'm also here to support the continuation with Dr. Webb, and the important thing is stability. So understanding the contracts for one year, and I'm sure that you understand to run any organization, stability is so important. So I'm hoping that we'll continue with the relationship with Dr. Webb and also with all the trustees of the Peralta Colleges. Thank you.
Corinne Gould, Marlene Hurd, Ada Chan, Bernard Ashcraft.
Hello, I'm not Corinne Gould, but she asked me to read her remarks. Corina Gould is a Tchotchkeño Aloni. She's a local cultural leader. She also works with American Indian children through the Title VII Program. And I don't like to lead with these statistics, because I think, you know, in the same way that Dr. Epstein was talking about branding children, our branding youth with a title. But, you know, it is true that American Indian youth and students in the city of Oakland have the lowest graduation rate, highest dropout rates. And that is why, you know, our relationship with institutions like Laney Colleges are so important, and that their leaderships, you know, understand our people and our issues. So Corina writes, "On behalf of Indian people organizing for change and a large constituent of American Indian peoples and allies in the Bay Area, we welcome, we come to you with this statement. The American Indian peoples that have come to know Dr. El Nora Webb over the years have known her to be genuine and thoughtful. She is a person of great compassion, strength, and determination. She looks to her faith in traditional ways to guide her in making decisions and has earned and has learned a great value in looking toward the future of the next seven generations in the work that she does, not only at her position as president of Laney College, but as a human being. The work integrity that Dr. Webb has exhibited in the time that she has worked at Laney has been for the benefit of all people. We support Dr. Webb remaining in her position for the next two years. We support the work that she is doing and the bridges that she will continue to make within the communities of Oakland and beyond. We acknowledge her as a leader in education, something that we strive to have in all of our children, and look to her to be an inspiration to those in our community that look to community colleges as a stepping stone to universities and the workforce for our tribal people. We look to the Board of Trustees to do their job, making sure that the leadership in our community college is stable, and by ensuring Dr. Webb her position at Laney for the next two years, it ensures our communities the continuity that is not always present in institutions and leadership that we intend, attempt to maneuver through. We also ask that her two-year contract is renewed, the funding for Laney College is not cut, enabling our students with the best possible outcomes for their future, and that the president is able to do her job in a sustainable way." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ada Chan?
Hello. My name is Ada Chan. I'm with Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan's office. I believe she sent a letter, we sent a letter from our office a couple weeks ago in support of El Nora. I wanted to speak specifically to my experience. We've appreciated so much, El Nora has had Laney College participate in the Lake Merritt planning process. It's very rare to get ongoing institutional participation. Not only has El Nora participated, but she's ensured that her staff, the staff here at Laney and facilities planning and management have participated in, it feels like it was a five-year process, maybe four. There is still a year left in the planning process for the Lake Merritt Station area. Also, what we've enjoyed is, not only has she been here as a representative of the Peralta Colleges and Laney specifically, but she's engaged the student body of Laney in participating, not representing the students, but having students participate in the planning process, which we were very lucky to have. It's unusual in planning processes, which are very long. So wanted to appreciate that so much and encourage you all to continue to have her participation, because we all know that as Laney grows and the city grows, our success is intertwined. And El Nora's done a wonderful job, and we look forward to working with her in the upcoming years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Marlene Hurd here? Bernard Ashcraft?
Board of Trustees, I'm Bernard Ashcraft, CEO of the Bay Area Business Roundtable. I want to share some pictures. I wanted to share those pictures because it tells a story. Dr. Webb has made the most positive and biggest impact on Laney College not seen in decades. She's a true education ambassador. All communities support her entire efforts to provide access to quality education and career development. Not long ago, I attended a graduation at the auditorium, and there were fifty-two students on the stage, and two or three of my colleagues with me pointed out that forty-seven of those students came from the Bay Area Business Roundtable as a direct result of Dr. Webb's presentations at the roundtable. The community trusts Dr. Webb. And we find it quite interesting, what is it about a district that threatens to remove education excellence and a college president whose background and challenges in life makes it possible to effectively communicate with all communities and give them hope? There's been so much noise in the past two months. It's unbelievable. And we said with education development and workforce development, economic development, she transforms communities in what she has done. And when you look at the return on the investment, we said that if Dr. Webb was on the stock market, she'd blow up the Dow Jones. You see, we got this letter before you convened, and talks about an agreement, but it doesn't tell the full story. So we didn't know until you came out there was a one-year agreement. But what you're not telling the public is you have drastically cut her budget. Now you want to evaluate her and be able to measure her with inadequate budget and support. It's not right. We demand a multi-year contract and be honest with the community. You see, we cannot allow this investment to be wasted with small-minded thinking and political buffoonery. The community has trust and faith in Dr. Webb. Unfortunately, we can't say the same for you by even allowing all this silly noise. Support Dr. Webb. Thank you.
We have Carl Oliver from Mark Wilson, Molly Seawald, Mark Wilson, and Romeo Garcia. Mr. Wilson, is anyone else, we have Carl Oliver and Molly Seawald. Is that three for you?
That would be three.
Is Mr. Oliver here or Molly Seawald?
Mr. Oliver's here.
Good evening. My name is Mark Corbett Wilson. I've presented to the Board several times. My issue, as always, is financial aid. Four years ago, I came to Laney College to get an entrepreneurship certificate, and after six months of not hearing from financial aid, I contacted my congressman, who contacted the district, who sent a letter that said everything's fine. My second year here, I'd never heard from financial aid, and that's when I came to the Board in the summer of 2012 and told my story. I've been homeless ever since that time. I did get some financial aid in my third year, but then that was taken away in the spring, so I had to appeal again and lost my work-study job, and, you know. So this is my fourth year, and although I started the process, at the beginning of the year, the Director of Financial Aid quit the week before school started, and then the supervisor of financial aid at Laney sort of disappeared and then eventually quit. And so it's been a long process. At the end of fall semester, we heard that no students got their financial aid last summer from Laney College, and I've been looking into that ever since. The only statement I've got from the administration is that that was all taken care of. So I don't know what that means. And then, early this year, we discovered, students have worked on this constantly, trying to figure out what's going on, and we discovered there was an audit last summer at Laney College. And we've been trying to get the results of that audit, which are supposed to be public, ever since. And the newspaper has tried to get it from the district, and so far, we haven't had much success. But luckily, I did see a copy of the review, and the first thing that jumped out was, and this review was from nine, ten, and ten-eleven, the academic years nine, ten, and ten-eleven, the first thing that jumped off the page was that ninety percent of the students at Laney College were receiving some financial aid. So when students have this much trouble receiving their financial aid, and I know the Board has heard this ad nauseam for years, I think it's important that we realize that it affects potentially ninety percent of the student body to have these difficulties. So I just wanted to check back again tonight and ask that that review be made public, that the college's response be made public, that the Department of Education's response to that be made public, so that we can all try to identify what is going on in financial aid and try to fix it. That's all that we've been asking for all these years. Now, it was unfortunate that last September seventeenth, all of my spring 2013 fee waivers were reversed, and I came to this body on October eighth, and I mentioned that and a couple other issues about security of student records and the documentation of transferred units for graduating students. And one of the trustees asked for a report back from the chancellor, and I'm here to ask if that report back was ever made. I went through multiple meetings with vice presidents and deans, trying to find out who reversed my fees, why it was done, and to get that situation resolved. That never happened. So at this point, I feel for the students. Earlier, you tried to go through the process. I am on the Peralta Student Council. I've been working, I'm on the Steering Committee for the Financial Aid Solutions Project. I've been working with IT and financial aid for two years on this, goes back to early meetings with Dr. Ong and Dr. Webb, trying to discover what's going on. The good news that people keep reporting is that financial aid will finally be automated. Now, it has taken, I think, eight years to accomplish, since it was first recommended by the ACCJC for accreditation purposes, but the good news is, this fall, students' applications for financial aid will be completely automated. So for two-thirds of the students, they will never have to go into the financial aid office, and I'm sure that will be a big relief for them. There's still, a third of the students will have to be verified. That's a federal mandate, and so we'll see how that goes. Two weeks ago, at the District Education Committee, which I'm on, I'm the student representative, the interim Director of Financial Aid brought a chart that showed that across the district, the financial aid offices are staffed at fifty percent at best, and that until three specialists were transferred from Merritt to Laney, Laney was at about twenty-five percent staffing. So the offices come this fall will still be below fifty percent across the district of the necessary staff, and we will see how this proceeds. I would ask our Vice Chancellor of Student Services if he would comply with the FSA Handbook, which is the Federal Student Aid Handbook, and publish the information of how many students applied for financial aid and how many students received financial aid, and the reasons for the difference, the delta, between how many students applied and how many students actually received financial aid. That would at least give us some idea of the students that I've been referring to for two years as the disappeared. There are students that come to Laney who apply for financial aid, and after six months or a year of struggling, simply go away. They go to another district, they get a job, we don't know.
Mr. Wilson, your two time slots have expired.
And do I get my own time slot?
Is yours and Carl Oliver, is Molly Seawald here? Is Molly, I'm sorry, Molly Sealand, is Molly Sealand here? Mr. Wilson, you have Carl Oliver and Mark Wilson. Those have expired.
Perhaps she's left. Thank you.
Romeo Garcia.
All right. Good evening. Just turned myself off. Romeo Garcia, I'm the Executive Director of the Peralta Colleges Foundation, and thank you, Trustee Brown, Trustee Guian, for having me this evening, all of the trustees' presidents as well. In the midst of the struggles that we've been hearing about tonight and throughout my year and a half and working at the district, I'm here, and I'm often here, to say thank you, to say thank you to the trustees, to say thank you to the college presidents, the vice chancellor, vice chancellors, the vice presidents as well, for all of the support that you've provided to the Peralta Colleges Foundation over the years. For those members of the public who do not know and who may be here this evening as well, the mission of the Peralta Colleges Foundation is to support student success, to support student success by raising money for scholarships, by facilitating the distribution of scholarships from funders, also creating relationships within the business community to help make sure that our students, once they've completed what they've come here to do academically and technically, to have jobs that they will be going on to or four-year institutions that they'll transfer to. Just a week ago, we had one of our events, which is one of our two events per year, and that is our annual golf tournament. And our annual golf tournament brings support from throughout the community, and all of you have been a part of making sure that that event is very successful each year. So I've come again this evening to say thank you for your support, thank you for being there on that day. It looked like many of you had a good time, and I'm glad you did. But I want to let everyone know that the good times that we have are all for our students. I'm an Oakland resident. I went through Oakland Public Schools, so I was educated in this city, and to have the opportunity to be the Executive Director at this time has been an honor for me. I know we have a lot of things to be thankful for, and I know that the work of the trustees, our presidents, also the members of the Peralta community, who I have to also remember to thank, because the foundation did not put on this last event by ourselves, nor do we put on the rest of the events. We require the, or we benefit from the support of people throughout the Peralta District, and we're very thankful for that. So we had an increase in our number of golfers this year, we had an increase in our sponsors this year, which means we will have an increase in the dollars that we'll be able to give out to students. which means we will have an increase in the dollars that we'll be able to give out to students as they apply for our scholarships in the fall and in the spring. So this being one of the last meetings of the year of the Board of Trustees, I want to make sure to take the time to say thank you and look forward to your continued support throughout the district. In particular, I want to thank Trustee Riley for his leadership on the Golf Committee and bringing everyone together and reaching out to our many sponsors in the community that helped us to make this a successful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. That concludes the public comment section of the Board meeting.
So the Board wants to thank the students and community. The Board wants to thank the students and community for your participation at tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, by law, we cannot take any action on what was discussed this evening. However, we are asking the administration to look into this issue and report back to the Board as soon as possible. Thank you so much. This time, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is the Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have members from the Associated Student Government here to make a report? Associated Student Reports. I'm gonna ask for order, I'm gonna ask for order. Order, please. We listen to your comments, we ask you to respect the proceedings of the meeting. We'd like to ask you to respect the proceedings of the meeting. We invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. We'd ask you to allow the meeting to continue. Student Government Reports, please.
We have a speaker on the floor.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Christian from Merritt College, Associated Students. I'm here to report that we attended the SSCCC. We sent four students with-
You need to, you need to respect the process, please. We've heard you, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments. Tea, please.
I'm Tracy Christian from Merritt College, President of Associated Students. I'm here to report that we attended the double S, the SSCCC. We sent four students, along with our advisor and our delegate, Marlene Hurd. Today, we had our Malcolm X Program, which was a success. Wednesday, tomorrow, we will be having our ASMC Scholarship Banquet. We are awarding a total of the amount of $6,500 to students at Merritt College. May twenty-first, at 5:30, is our commencement at the Paramount Theater. This summer, we will, we will have a retreat with the new ASs. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name's Danny McCarty, I'm currently a Judicial Counsel member at Berkeley City College, and I am also the incoming ASBCC president. Since last gathering, Berkeley City College has hosted various educational events on campus that have really boosted our sense of community. Our Earth Week events, which took place on April twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, had the atrium buzzing with the activity. The informative proceedings themed human rights, human rights violators and human rights activists, brought together speakers from progressive organizations such as Food First in Oakland and 350.org's Bay Area Chapter to highlight global issues ranging from food security and the hunger crisis to the controversial Keystone Pipeline and climate change's dim future. Students filled the atrium to listen to the testimonies offered by activists and learn the complexity of world issues in a communal assembly. Among the many activities and events hosted by Berkeley City College in recent weeks, ranging from our Learning Communities Town Hall, our African-American Culture Events, our Service Communities Transfer Workshops, and much, much more, among all these, the Associated Students of Berkeley City College have been moving forward with a complex, complex range of initiatives to improve our students' educational ventures. Many of these initiatives were the result of our ASBCC Town Hall Event, whereby we identified specific student concerns, discussed the issues, and walked away knowing which areas needed to be focused and how we were going to move forward. Three major categories encapsulate the scope of our projects and areas of focus moving into the next term. Those being student communication, student engagement in the shared governance process, and student issues. At the foundation of each of these focal points is a common goal of improving the lives of our students and strengthening our operations as a community college institution. A recent developing project that has been emerging involves reshaping the shared governance process at Berkeley City College. Members of the council have created a working diagram that holistically captures the aim of reconstructing our student government operations, relations with administration, and fostering effective methods for giving student representatives a voice in BCC's decisions. The scope of this developing project aims to sustain an integrative model whereby the ASBCC representatives play a key role in the shared governance process. Students contributing to our BCC Voice, which is now an established course, part of the curriculum at Berkeley City College, can disseminate the progress of these developments. And finally, our student leaders can operate at the highest level of efficiency to execute the needs of our students. Moving forward with this vision in mind, I want to publicly commend our college president, Dr. Budd, for leading the effort and providing diligence to our extended council. Tomorrow morning, faculty administration and ASBCC representatives will brainstorm these pending developments, and I'm thrilled to participate in the objectives for the next upcoming term. That concludes my report.
Thank you. College of Alameda.
Greetings, I'm Malaja Williams, the President of the Associated Students of College of Alameda. And it is an honor to give my very last report of the semester to the Board and, and my last report of my community college career. As my last, oh, thank you. As the last report of the semester, I would like to recap the awesome semester that the College of Alameda has had. We have hosted a plethora of events and collaborations with the administration this semester, such as the March in Washington, the movie preview of the Fruitvale Station, and the family of Oscar Grant was able to attend. The ASCOA has provided learning programs for high school students, as well as we've had a few culture events and unity events here on campus. Honestly, I can go on and on about the events that we've had this semester. Last fall, the College of Alameda started out with five members, I'm sorry, the ASCOA, started out with five members, and now we have a complete strong unit of thirteen members. We began this year with five clubs, and now we have fifteen. We did not have an inter-club council last semester, but now we do. We have rewritten our bylaws and funding procedures so that we may be more transparent to our community, and by doing this, we have created unity. I am so proud of the growth of the ASCOA senators, and I'm proud to be a part of such an amazing organization. In the past month, seven people, seven students, attended the SSCCC Conference, and many of our new senators attended this. They found that this experience was both inspirational and informative. And it gave them a sense of empowerment and importance, which they should feel as students. Last Friday, the ASCOL, ASCOA, sorry, held their thirty-first annual award ceremony. The invitation was extended out to many members of the district. And I give a special thank you to Bill, Mr. Bill Whittham, who was in attendance that night. Your presence and your support is greatly appreciated. Last week, we hosted the Dreamy Live event for the Dream Act Awareness, as well as the Cinco de Mayo event. There, there was food, live music, and Aztec dancers, we had a really good time. I have to give a wonderful shout-out to our Gay Street Alliance Club, who planned an awesome event today. They planned a fashion show, and we have a fashion program called the ADAM Program for fashion students. And they were able to exhibit their fashions. And we have a very talented group of students at College of Alameda, I do have to say. Last but not least, the College of Alameda has taken extra steps in creating a cafeteria on our campus. Once again, the talent of our students was displayed. They came up with business proposals and even a commercial, and a few students were chosen. And that is the plan that we will take to implement a cafeteria on our campus. I've had so much fun on the College of Alameda campus this year. The people on the campus just keep getting better and better. I will miss the political debates and all the meetings. I have definitely, I can definitely say I have matured as a young woman and as an individual by being part of the Peralta Community College District, and especially College of Alameda. I realized talents that I didn't know I had. So I say thank you to everyone in the community. The chancellor, the board members, Dr. Gravenberg, my advisor Luis, Alexis Monavirgin, Dr. Inger Stark. Everyone, you have all, have been a measure in my growth as here as a student. A last comment. My hat goes off to all of the students and community leaders during public comment. I say this because it takes a lot of encouragement to display what happened here tonight. As a graduating student, for me, a graduation is about happiness, my accomplishments, my achievements, and my hard work that I did at community college. And it would be a dishonor to have that taken away. So I ask the Board, the Chancellors, and anyone who has power to listen to these students, as they wouldn't be here and display with such passion if it wasn't for an important purpose. So I thank you all, and I hope you have a very good evening. Thank you. Oh, what's next for me is I will be transferring to San Francisco State, and my major will be psychology. Thank you.
Laney College.
Hello, Carl Oliver, President of Associated Students of Laney College. Wow, what a night. Where do I start? I won't go into all the events we've thrown this semester. We have done a few town halls. President Bill Guian has come to one. Nikki Gonzalez-Ewen has come to another. Would like to thank you for your support. Yeah, we, yeah, we've had a lot of events, we've held strong. I'd like to use this time to recognize, you know, all the student leaders here that just made reports. It's 9:30, we've listened to a lot of public comments. It shows a lot of dedication to stay here and to give our report, and thanks for listening all year long, so. It's a long year. Also, I'd like to thank Chancellor Ortiz. He extended our president's contract another year. I'm also elected for another year, and I'll be proud to serve along with Dr. Webb for another year. I appreciate her leadership, I have faith in her leadership, even though it's for another year. I have faith that it might go longer than that, because I do have faith in her leadership. She's taught me a lot. We don't always agree, but we, she's taught me how to, how to talk with, you know, have those difficult conversations, even though you don't agree, we can all be civil, we can all be respectful. So, I'd like to thank you, thank you guys, thank you, Dr. Webb, thank you, Board of Trustees. Chancellor Ortiz, he came out, had a town hall about two weeks ago, talking about the Partners in Leadership Contract. I learned a lot from that, he came out and said he made a mistake, that it wasn't a democratic decision, and where do we go from here? He, you know, that showed a lot of leadership, it showed a lot of humility. I'd like to thank you for that, you taught me something right there, and I'm proud to serve with you guys. So thank you for, thank you for listening and listening for us for the whole year, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mark Corbett Wilson, again, I'm the Communication Officer for the Peralta Student Council. Unfortunately, the Peralta Student Council has not met over the last month. Trustee Clegg's mother has been ill. And some, for some reason, it's just not happened for us. No agenda went out this week, I doubt we'll be meeting this week. Be sorry not to meet with you, Chancellor Ortiz, but this was to be our last meeting of the year. We want to thank everybody for the Directors of Campus Life. We came here a year ago and met with Chancellor Ortiz, asking for advisors for the student governments. And over the la, over a year, we got four advisors, although one of them got promoted to be dean. So apparently, we're getting another director at Merit College. But it's, it's been a very difficult year for the Peralta Student Council. It's the second year, we knew that the second year would be difficult. I can only hope that going forward, they have good success. I've spent two years, I'm term-limiting myself out. I think it's time to let the students go forward. I have been asking for the results of the district-wide student trustee election and have been unable to get those results, which I find fascinating and frustrating. So we don't know who the student trustees will be next year. It's, it's just another one of those Peralta conundrums that I've repeatedly asked in writing and have not received that information. So whoever the student trustees are next year, we welcome them and hope that they can have a more successful year. Unfortunately, also, there is no leadership retreat planned for this summer. Last year, we had a very successful leadership retreat, and I was very proud to see many of the students that were at the Peralta Student Council Leadership Retreat speak tonight on all sides of every issue. So I feel that we did a great job in putting on that four-day retreat. Several of presidents, vice presidents, some trustees, and I believe Chancellor Ortiz even dropped in and said hello. So I'm hoping that the directors pick up the slack on this and plan another leadership retreat for the four Associated Student Governments, which have been elected. Apparently, those results were available. So I can only hope I'll be there to help if they can put together another retreat this August. So I want to thank you all, and I will see you at a Peralta Foundation event, no doubt. Thank you. Moving on to the next section is that we have Chancellors' Reports. Chancellor Ortiz. So I think you said, in view of the time, you're gonna pass on reports. Is that right?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the next item, I'm gonna ask that we postpone till, until the next meeting, items number six and number seven, without objection. I'd like to postpone items number six and number seven to the next meeting. Any objection? Seeing none, so ordered. I'd like to make a couple of amendments to tonight's agenda. Under item number twenty-five, yeah, item number twenty-five is short-term assignments, consider approval. Short-term assignments, hiring of non-academic classified short-term employees. Number twenty-five should, the end dates for Lakeisha Jones and Ronnie Roberts should actually read 6/30/15, not 6/30/14. The other correction is under item number twenty-nine. Item number twenty-nine is consider approval to enter into agreement with Fourleaf Inc. for project inspection services on the Laney College Breezeway's pavement rehabilitation project, bid number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and the leak remediation for Laney College Buildings A, B, C, D, E, and G, bid number thirteen dash fourteen, twenty-two. That item should read that the agreement for, with Fourleaf Inc. for project inspection services on Laney College Breezeway's and structural leaks for rehabilitation projects should be amended to, to have the approval of Anthenio Inc. due to Fourleaf being non-responsive to bid proposals, and as such, short notice was provided until after the agenda was posted.
to bid proposals and as such, short notice was provided until after the agenda was posted. So we're swapping out item number 1, item number 29. We're picking Anthonio instead of Fourleaf. And the last item, item number 35, we're removing item number 35, budget transfer number 67, has been removed from the agenda. Without objection. Any objection from the board? Seeing none, so ordered. Moving back to the regular agenda items, we move on to the, brings us to the consent calendar where we take action.
Mr. President, how about the District Academic Senate?
Oh, sorry. There I go. Moving on, actually, yeah, actually, Board of Trustees Reports is next.
We can skip that.
Oh, just let me, is there any objection to skipping Board of Trustees Report? Or does anybody have anything that they'd like to report? Okay, let's start with, let's start with Dr. Riley. Anything to report tonight?
Let me just check this out.
Okay, Trustee Handy.
Actually, there were, I had the opportunity to attend the California Community College League Conference for four days, taking a pre-conference policies and procedures, Brown Act, also ethics classes, and quite a few other things. But one of the things that one of the chancellors brought to our attention, and something that I see we have on item number 11 as well, is that there's a challenge that's coming now as courses are, new courses are being brought in or courses are changing the amount of units. Some are changing from two to three units. And what is happening is the side that's making the determination at the college level is not the same side that's communicating with the financial aid side. And what students are finding is when they leave, because of these slight changes, they're out of funding. And that I don't know how we start the conversation about this. But she said this is very, very urgent and that we really need to look at this because, because she happens to sit on five different boards, she sees what's happening and it's all connected. But she said the disconnect is something that's a challenge. And so that is something that I thought was really important and that hopefully that we can look into taking, looking at this matter a little bit more in the future. And that's, right now, that's all we can talk about. The other things later. Thank you.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Galasa. Trustee Galazza-Juan.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Trustee Wiley.
Sorry, the time is kind of almost 10. Oh, sorry, yes, 10, 30, sorry. And I host chancellor and everyone on the board and all the college president and the people who serves our community can really consider the void from the student to have some challenge of the problem to be fixed. And also, I think the purpose to, we have education for everyone is we want us, our community, we want the student to be better, to be stronger, and also to achieve the higher education. No matter is in a associate degree or a certificate or the successful transfer to the four-year college. We have so many problems need to be fixed and I hope can be fixed as soon as possible. I know the problem cannot be fixed over the night, but it's maybe take a month and sometime we might set up a department to correct some different feedback from a student. Can really help the policy and or take action to match and to fix their problem and also to deliver some positive energy of the message to the student. And I'm sorry about that, some student may be as little aware than what I heard. But I would like to invite the student, maybe if you watch this video and you can talk to me and maybe we can think something to change to be more positive. And that's my report. And thank you.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Withrow. Okay, now we move to the District Academic Senate Report. Dr. Van Putten.
Mr. President, before you go on to that, can I clarify something on the agenda, please?
Let's do that before we get to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, and members of the public. As you know, the California Community College Scorecard implementation, with that implementation, faculty and staff at the Peralta Colleges have been putting attention on designing and actualizing the plans, systems, and infrastructure that will allow the colleges to demonstrate and be compensated for their success in supporting students with completing programs of study and earning the degrees and certificates. Tonight's report will focus on three recent events that are relevant to this initiative. In previous reports to the board, I have referenced the RP Research Group Project, Student Support Redefined, and the six success factors that students say make a meaningful difference in their retention and persistence to degree or certificate completion. They are connected, directed, engaged, focused, nurtured, and valued. In alignment with the recommendations for faculty involvement that emerged from the research project and in response to a district academic senate focus on what classroom faculty can do in this regard, Laney Senate Vice President Lisa Cook facilitated a series of lunchtime dialogues this semester to further develop these themes. The last dialogue of the semester was on April 29th with the topic of connected. And the senate lounge was packed with mostly students and some faculty, thanks to Professor Sabzavarri's philosophy classes. In between mouthfuls and with some considerable emotion, students talked about what they need from faculty and from the college. To provide some context, several of these students are English-language learners with special concerns. Here are a few items from their comments. Students expressed a need and desire for translators, independent study support, teaching methods for different learning styles, practice with developing the ability to distinguish knowledge from wisdom, and perhaps most surprisingly, greater rigor from their instructors. Several students who are majoring in STEM subjects and who have no difficulty with mathematics and science courses, but who have trouble with communicating grammatically correct and effective written English, said they don't want an easy A in a course from which they don't learn what they need to be successful professionals. They want to be challenged and supported in learning, although, as one of them noted, it's not just about a lesson. Clearly, this is a message that more faculty must hear and heed. Last Saturday, Trustee Guillen, Chancellor Ortiz, and President Budd welcomed a small but fervent group of full and part-time faculty to Berkeley City College for a conversation about outsourcing education, higher education culture, and the effects of adjunctivism. Ironically, many of the points made a few moments ago during communications from the public were addressed during this conversation that included contingent faculty from New York, Texas, Chicago, Washington DC, thanks to the technology of Google Hangouts. The conversation was the brainchild of my colleague, Professor Fabian Banga, who teaches Spanish composition, culture, and literature at BCC. Professor Banga invited the trustee, the chancellor, BCC Academic Senate President Cleavon Smith, former Peralta Student Trustee Rich Copenhagen, PFT President Matthew Goldstein, UCB Professor Miguel Altieri, California Part-Time Faculty Association Communications Director Margaret Manzio Manolis, and yours truly, to-be panelists during the event. Our role was to share and respond to ideas about the increasing emphasis on productivity, budget constraints, privatization, and the massification of education. The keynote presenter, Audrey Waters, is a writer and blogger who has worked in the education field for the past 15 years. In her presentation, Ms. Waters focused on the history of automation in education and the impact of technology on labor. You can experience the talk, complete with slides and historical imagery, online at her blog site, hackededucation.com. The event was recorded and will be available on YouTube. Finally, last week, students in a Laney Political Science Course taught by contingent faculty Professor Sheila D'Amico completed a culminating project focused on one of our institutional learning outcomes, global awareness, ethics, and civic responsibility. These students created a Facebook site, Know Your Rights, to inform the public on their rights of due process and other Fourth Amendment rights. I encourage you to view and comment on their work, which is a phenomenal display of how student learning outcomes embedded in a project-based learning activity. Engage students, provide a much-needed community service, and show how our students can contribute solutions for societal problems. Unfortunately, there is insufficient time to tell you about another student learning outcomes event held at Merritt College on Friday. Because as a board, you have shown an exceptional commitment to SLOs with board policy and administrative procedure 4210, I'm confident that you will want to hear about that in my next report. That concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you for receiving them.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the clerk to please clarify item number 35 at this point before we move to the consent calendar. I made a motion on item number 35 and I need clarification on the proposed change.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to clarify, item 35, budget transfer number 67 is, should in fact not be removed. And I also want to add that under budget transfer number 69, the revised budget and transfer amount has changed for transfer number 2465 to 977,304. Transfer number 2733-02, the revised budget has been changed to 1,970,374, and the transfer amount has been changed to 370,374. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move now to the consent, yes, there are changes, to item number 35. There's just missed, I read out the wrong thing. So that's why I asked for clarification. Thank you. The next item is the consent calendar. We're voting on all items on the consent calendar except the items that have been removed, which is number 14. Item number, also, item number 12 has been removed to the action calendar. Item number 12, at the request of Trustee Withrow. Item number 12 is consider approval of sabbatical leaves for 2014, also at the request of Trustee Brown. Item number 19. Item number 19 is consider ratification of AP travel consulting and contract warrants. So those are the items that will move to the action calendar at this time without objection. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Don't move.
Move by Trustee Brown.
Yeah, that's me.
Because I heard her first. And then seconded by Trustee Riley. Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now that brings us to the next segment of the agenda, which is the action calendar. I'd like to move to item number 12. Is there a motion for approval to item number 12?
Don't move.
Moved by Trustee Galasa. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Riley. Item number 12 is consider approval of sabbatical leaves for 2014, 2015. This item was pulled by Trustee Withrow. Trustee Withrow.
Mr. President, I'd like to propose a modification to the motion to approve that it be conditioned upon the individual faculty members returning their report of their sabbatical 90 days after termination of the sabbatical.
There's a motion to modify item number 12, that we make this contingent upon a report back from the affected faculty with the 90 days of their return from sabbatical. Any, is there, I'd like to ask if there's a motion for approval, would you like to make that in the form of a motion, Trustee Withrow?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Great. Is there a second for that? Second by Trustee Brown, discussion. Trustee Nikki.
Thank you. I guess this is a question for the staff. What is the normal procedure for reporting back? I'm very loath to interfere with an academic matter like this at the board level. There's a procedure that's been established for reporting on sabbaticals, for the vetting of sabbaticals, et cetera. It's a competitive procedure. I'm quite reluctant to, at this late day, at this period, engage in this level of micromanaging. If there is anything that we could call micromanaging, I think this would be it. So, well, what I'm saying is that I, that I think there is a procedure here. And without knowing what that procedure is, I'm really reluctant to condition the granting of a sabbatical on a last-minute board action. So I, you know, I'd like to hear from the administration on this before we move forward.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to add, the reason why I'm doing this, I'm not looking for additional items.
Trustee Withrow, can you hold one second? I want to recognize Trustee Galasa. I wanted to sneak him aside.
I have a procedure. And is there someone here who could just briefly describe what the requirements are for reporting back from sabbaticals?
I'd like to call on Vice Chancellor Orkin.
Article 26 of the collective bargaining agreement goes into great detail about sabbaticals. And I don't think there's a requirement that a report be returned in that period of time that was mentioned by Trustee Withrow. I'm looking through it again and don't see it. There is supposed to be, there's a very elaborate, very detailed method of scoring and working on the sabbatical. There is a section I, it's called Letter of Agreement. Any faculty member granted a one-year leave will be required to sign a contract guarantee full-time service to the district for two years. However, I don't see anything in here about a report being due. I may be missing something in Article 26, but I don't recall that. So this would possibly not be consistent with the contract.
In that case, I would respectfully ask Mr. Withrow that we not make a mandate here at the board that would interfere with the collective bargaining process, but that we simply convey a strong interest in the timeline for the reportage, and this is for future consideration.
I would support that. Trustee Withrow.
The reason for submitting this is that this is a substantial investment on the part of the citizens' funds, public funds. And to have a report that comes back to the board means it's coming back to the public. And it would seem to me that, like any other investment of funds, and I'm not saying this isn't a good investment, but like any other investment of funds, there should be some sort of transparency for the public to understand the return on the investment, if you will, that has been made in these sabbaticals.
Vice Chancellor Orkin.
Yes, Section M of Article 26 is called Professional Development Report. And it states, "A faculty member returning from professional development leave shall be required to submit to the chancellor in writing two copies of a report describing in detail the learning activities that took place during such leave." And it goes on. And it says, "College/university coursework shall also be described. A copy of the report shall be filed in the college library." So there is transparency. There's no specific time limit stated in that part.
So I'd like to ask if the, if the, if the request of a 90-day timeframe report back, if that's allowed under the collective bargaining agreement?
I would say that that's not in the collective bargaining agreement and would be subject to grievance.
Mr. President, 90 days seem reasonable to me, but if you would accept language that would state in a reasonable fashion, and when the report is submitted to the chancellor, that the chancellor would then share that report with the board, which means it would be then shared with the public?
Any objection to the modified motion, which is to ask that the report, once completed in a reasonable time, be shared with the chancellor and the board of trustees? in a reasonable time, be shared with the chancellor and the board of trustees? Okay, so there's a, there's a motion on that. Is there, do you accept that motion? Okay, second? Is there a second on this motion? Second by trustee Brown. Now we're going to discuss this item. Trustee Handy.
In light of transparency, is there documentation that shows that everyone who has taken a sabbatical has indeed submitted this report?
I don't, everyone who has taken a sabbatical, I certainly don't know of any such documentation in my office. However, it's supposed to be in the library.
But who would, who would be turned into? I mean, okay, I'm just gonna, let me just say this. I think the sabbatical is absolutely wonderful thing to happen. I'm very excited for all of those who are going to have it. I'm also very interested in the work that they did in that year that they had taken out. And I would think that if someone had a sabbatical coming back after a year, that they would want to share with the public where their funds were utilized, because the whole purpose of a sabbatical, as I understand it, is for personal development that will come back and benefit the college.
Right. And so just to comment again, section M states that two copies of a report, of the report in writing are provided to the chancellor, and a copy of the report shall be filed in the college library. So I would assume that all these reports are in the college library, the way it's stated in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, I've been a trustee for 12 years, and I assume nothing for me. So what I'd like to say is moving forward, because I, the reason that this really kind of bites me is because I know of someone at one college that took a sabbatical one year before retirement, so had a year gift of public funds and then just left. And that's the type of thing that I feel is an abuse, and that's not everyone. So to make the public happy and to really feel that their money is being used, because many people in the public that are working, they don't get a year sabbatical. You know, they go to work every day. So I would think that someone who has that gift would not have a problem with the transparency of sharing what that development was. So moving forward, I would ask the chancellor, find out who specifically the reports were given to, so that we can make sure that we are following the guidelines and the stipulations of their bargaining agreement, and that this documentation is indeed in the library. And then let us know at a date later.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Further discussion, trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Thank you. I hear the, I hear the concerns of my colleagues. I think this is an appropriate question for administrative action to ensure that sabbatical leaves, in fact, are adhering to the contract. I think I personally would object to the notion that a sabbatical is a gift. It's an earned benefit that has been contractually negotiated. We have working people in the district who put in years of service. I don't think any faculty member right now is actually getting a year. That would be nice, if we could provide sabbaticals for an entire year for a faculty member who had put in seven years of service to renew, refresh, develop their trade, their craft, and come back and serve. So to the extent that, that the provisions in the contract perhaps, in some instances, are not being adhered to, I think the administration could look into that and report back to the board on that question. I strongly object to the board, in this moment, inserting any language which potentially conflicts with a collective bargaining agreement that has been negotiated carefully by the district and the faculty union. I think that's just heading in the wrong direction. So I can't support this motion. Thank you.
Trustee Galasa.
I am on clerk.
Let me restate the motion, if I may.
No, with respect to the, the phrase that we were given a moment ago, that I believe we just added, the, the board would receive the document is, Mr. Whitrow, could you?
The chancellor would receive the document, and the chancellor would submit that information and be made available for the board to review.
I would urge that the, at the next negotiations, that the chancellor instruct the appropriate person's at the negotiating table to include that language in, in the contract. But I think it would be inappropriate for the board here to be inserting language into a contract that has already been, in good faith, negotiated by the faculty. But I would like to say, and second what trustee Handy said, this is a real honor to go on a sabbatical. It is, it is, it is not a gift, but it's the equivalent of a thank you for all of the years that you put in service, and it's immensely rewarding. Haven't had a sabbatical myself at one time. It's a great opportunity. I would also like to point out, over the last few years during this great recession that we've been going through, sabbaticals were almost nonexistent. So this is a, this is a spring, as far as I'm concerned. It's, it's a return to the greening of our own people and our, and our commitment to our students. So I would, again, with respect, with the point that trustee Whitrow is making, that we not go so far as to actually mandate that an item be inserted into the contract. That would be the board itself directly negotiating, which I think is probably not appropriate.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Whitrow.
In addressing the past comments, nothing that I'm proposing, and there's nothing in the motion that is before this body, has anything to do with the contract. The contract is stated by the vice chancellor for educational services, states that the report coming back from the faculty members that have gone on sabbatical goes to the chancellor. This language would then call for the chancellor to submit that and make it available to the board, and therefore the public, so that the public understood the results and benefits of the investment that had been made. It's nothing to do with the contract. You're confusing the issue.
All right, so there's a motion on the table, the, the motion by trustee, by trustee Whitrow. Point of clarification takes priority. Trustee Riley.
To the chancellor. So, so is it a conflict with the contract, chancellor?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Does this motion run in conflict with the contract that we have between?
See, I don't think there's a conflict here. I think that what trustee Whitrow is asking for is, in many ways, just an administrative courtesy. And one time, I think trustee Handy reminded us, we have a calendar of reports, and while we are reinstating sabbatical leaves, because our budget is allowing us to do that, we can, again, from an administrative courtesy, not only to the board but to the public, the faculty are in fact making reports based on those sabbatical leaves. So to bring them here, I don't believe is contrary to the contract. I don't believe it, it, it contradicts any administrative procedure. I just think it's a professional courtesy.
Okay, trustee Galasa. Thank you, chancellor. Trustee Galasa.
For the clarification, it was my understanding that we were actually inserting language into the contract, which is, that's the basis of my objection. If it is merely as you, I shouldn't say merely, it is a kind of instruction to the administration that this is the will of the board. That's absolutely fine with me, and I have no problem.
So let me restate the motion. The motion that trustee Whitrow made is that once the academic, once the sabbatical reports have been submitted to the chancellor, that's the contract piece, is that once that's submitted, we're asking the chancellor to forward those reports to the board trustees for review. That's, 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 that's what.
Not for review.
I'm sorry, just for, just for information purposes. Trustee Whitrow, have I restated your motion correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. All those, any other, any other discussion?
If, if in fact, that's all that we're asking for, that's fine. The original language I heard was conditioned upon, and I guess that language has been modified sufficiently, so this is actually now a request to the administration to provide the information to the board. And if that's in fact what's being said, I can support that. That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so we understand what the motion is. Is the board ready to vote?
Yes.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. We move on to the next item, item number 19. Item number 19 is AP travel, consider ratification of accounts payable, travel, consulting, and contract warrant registered. That item was pulled by trustee Brown. Trustee Brown.
There's some clarification requested regarding the amount of the travel warrants and the timeliness in which we receive them, and we want to make sure that we're doing our job as stewards of the public funds in making sure that we're getting.
Sorry to interrupt. It's 10 o'clock. I'd like to ask the board to entertain a motion to extend the minute by 10 minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Any objection? Seeing none, the meeting's extended for 10 minutes. Trustee Brown.
Very quickly, the idea that I'd like to communicate with respect to the travel, and it's also, I believe, echoed by the chancellor and several trustees, is that we really want to make sure that we're getting the lowest possible travel rate, that it's in accordance with the GSA policies, and that we get the travel vouchers ahead of time. We've seen high, high travel expenses, and they're not getting to us in time, and this is a very important administrative issue with respect to managing public funds appropriately, and it's something that we've had a discussion with on, at various board meetings it's come up. So we want to see an improvement regarding when we're getting the travel requests and the rates that are listed with respect to the travel.
Yes, and if I may, response, I did get a heads up on this earlier today, and I asked, because both of, both of these items are with Laney College, I asked Dr. Webb to look into it, and I think she has some response, if you could share with us this evening.
First of all, I want to apologize to the chancellor as well as the board for you receiving the travel information later than ideal. And one, in the bottom line, I'm responsible. In one instance, one of my deans was sick for an extended period of time and thought he would not be able to make a National Science Foundation-related conference where he was presenting. He got back in time and then requested to go. So that should have been sent earlier, but he thought he would not be well enough to attend. In the other instance, it was my journalism professor of over 40 years, who rarely goes out on travel, and didn't think he would be able to make this conference, and requested later than ideal to be able to go to a major annual journalist-related gathering in Washington, DC, a major conference's annual. And he will be interacting with a lot of dignitaries who are in the, in the industry and bringing that back to Laney College. He's one of our faculty members who's probably, perhaps the longest standing at Laney, and has never had a sabbatical. So this is what he does at least once a year. He doesn't do it very often. So that ultimately, I'm responsible, my apology, but I chose to ask that those documents go forward to the chancellor, even given your conscientious focus on receiving materials well in advance, in order to make informed decisions in support of this community, because of the significance of those two individuals and what they do for the college and this community.
And the other, thank you, Dr. Webb, and the other component to that, as trustee Brown has mentioned, is I've asked the presidents to make sure that travel requests are in fact looking at the most economical approach to travel and hotel stays, et cetera. Unfortunately, because sometimes they're late, we have to pay premium price for travel. So, so we're trying to raise consciousness along those lines.
I'm going to ask for the, without objection, to extend the meeting for another five minutes. Without objection, so ordered. Sorry, continue, Dr. Ortiz.
I've said my piece.
Trustee Brown.
Thank you very much, Dr. Webb and chancellor Ortiz, for that explanation. And I just want to point out that this is not an issue that has only come up with respect to Laney College. By no means, we've observed this throughout the academic year, and it's an issue that we wanted to just be more mindful of in general. We really greatly appreciate the explanation that, that Dr. Webb has given, and that Dr. Ortiz has given, but we want to make sure that it's not misunderstood to be directed at any one particular college, because this is a district-wide issue that we really want to be taken seriously.
Well, that's right, and that's why I did say the college presidents, I've asked them to be mindful of that as well.
Trustee Handy.
The reason that I'm concerned is that you all know that I've taken students to the Congressional Black Caucus, and going to Washington, DC, we called our student trustee Yvonne Thompson, the airfare whisperer, but she was able to get tickets at the last minute on Priceline or whatever, and I got four students to Washington for less than the cost of some of the prices that people are putting there. And what I, what I think is that, you know, trustee Brown always says, "I act like this is my money when I'm spending it." And I, that's what I'm asking, that our employees act like that the public's money is their money. And if they, at the last minute, I'm sorry, you can get an airfare to Washington, DC last minute on a Tuesday or Wednesday for no more than $300. And this was exceeding, I think that sometimes employees think, oh, well, it's okay, or not just employees, but people are maybe a little cavalier, but I just want them to be a little bit more concerned about it. Because on our side, we're sharing rooms, we're, we're taking over each other's conferences, we're driving in cars to save money, and we would like everyone to have that same kind of attitude towards the public's money, that, you know, the least amount possible, and that I think we also see that we need to have some things systematically across the board, and I'll talk to you individually about those things. But thank you.
Is there a motion to approve item number 19, AP travel warrants?
So moved.
Moved and seconded without objection. Motion is approved. That brings us to the next part of the agenda, which is announcements. Trustee Brown.
The next regular board meeting will be held in four weeks, on June 10th, here at the district office's boardroom. Tonight is the only board meeting in May, due to the college graduations being held on May 21st, May 22nd, May 23rd, and May 24th. And I'd like to make a special congratulations of the graduates that'll be at the Peralta African-American graduation this Saturday, May 17th. And congratulations to all of our graduates, as well as to all of our faculty and staff for all their hard work to make the school year successful, for our students, and I've seen wonderful accomplishments for the, for the faculty, our student groups, from our college presidents, the amazing programs they've put on this academic year. So congratulations to all of Peralta, and good luck on the graduations. And, Mr. President, that concludes the announcements for this evening. Oh, one additional wonderful thing that we have an opportunity to participate in, and that's Father J. Matthews, the 40th year of his ordination, and the 25th year of his community, his community service, and his, his being the priest at St. Benedict's Church in my district in Area 2, East Oakland, 82nd and Bancroft.
I'd also like to just conclude the meeting with sending the board's well wishes to our colleague, student trustee Sharon Clegg. Her mother is in the hospital ill. We send her our warm thoughts and we hope for a speedy recovery. With that being said, I'd like to now adjourn the meeting. Meeting's adjourned to 10:09. Thank you.